We are present this evening in the Northfield High School Media Center in accordance with Younger Well State Day Plan. This room has been set up in accordance with planned social distancing guidelines. In addition, all those present at the meeting will be wearing face covering through the duration. Also attending tonight's meeting via teleconference are Erin Bailey, Director of Community Education, Hope Langston, Director of Instructional Services, Val Mertesworth, Director of Finance, and Greg Jono, Principal, Northfield Middle School. This meeting is open to the public via live stream. The recording of this meeting will be posted on the district website as soon as possible. Dr. Hillman, there were some items in the table file.
Yes, this evening in the table file, we had a copy of the State of the District overview. There were some gift agreements, there were some personnel appointments, increase, decrease, change in assignment. There was also some leaves of absence, a resignation, and then an updated version of the 2020 20.1 Super athletic goals.
Excellent, thank you. If there's no objection, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented by Jeff, if you're second? Second by Amy. All those in favor of approving the motion are approving the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion taken. We now have an opportunity for residents, business and property owners, parents, students and employees of the Northfield Public School District to address the board. To accommodate the public comment portion of our meeting, we made available on the district's website the ability for the public to submit feedback to the board via email by 5:00 p.m. of the day. All submissions that follow the district's policy regarding public comments will be read now by myself or chair. We have one public comments submission, and this is by a parent of the district. "Dr. Hillman, school board members, I'd like to express my disappointment in the school's decision to change their policy on the use of the middle school pool. Our daughter is a member of the Bull Shark Swim Club and was able to swim at the middle school during the summer. The summer swimming lessons provided a safe and fun environment. The coaches and parents followed all safety measures that were researched and recommended for pool health and safety practices. The result of these practices led to a safe and healthy student without incident for swimmers and coaches. The summer swimming program provided a measure of normality and provided some much-needed exercise. I cannot express how happy and healthy that made her through the summer. My daughter was devastated when she found out swimming was canceled due to COVID-19 for the end of the summer slash early fall. In August, the changes were announced, and she learned that she will not be able to swim until best case November. I recently heard the community education program was going to be able to continue using the pool. Allowing the community education program to continue with swimming lessons, but not allowing the swim club to use the pool does not make sense to me. The swim club creates long-lasting physical health and educational growth for these kids that cannot be replaced without full time. Please consider the Bull Shark Swimming Club to practice at the middle school and continue providing a wonderful environment for our kids. The swim club is a great community organization. They have great coaches, active parents, and wonderful kids. We would hate to lose this wonderful program. With no pool, that means no swimming. Sincerely, Jill Moller, parent of the district." Alright, that was the only public comment for the evening, so we will move on now to not take the recognition part.
Yes, and I just have one announcement this evening, and it's about the first day of school. So, we held the first official day of school today. And I think probably for the first time in the school district's history, we have some students on campus and some students learning at home. And what I'm happy to say is that overall, the reports from our building principals is that today was a good day. The transportation system worked well both before school and after school. I had a chance to be at the Greendale Park Building for the first bell ever at that facility and got to see a lot of happy children walking into the building, very well organized outside. By all of our principals, we had little if any issues with any masks today. So, no concerns about that. We think that our parents and our community and our students heard the expectation and came in appropriately. Here at the high school, you'll notice when you came in, you've seen some green arrows out the door and some one-way signs. Those are for passing times. And so, students do have, most of the building is one-way. There are some areas where there is two-way traffic just because of the spot in the building. However, overall, what we've heard is that, in fact, lunch, another thing that is a big deal during a pandemic, understand that all the buildings that went well. Of course, all these things, there's some things that our principals will want to be better tomorrow than they did today. Checking in with many of our online, few of our online staff, the kinds of things that you expect, a lot of excitement to get started. A few quirks here and there, some logins and a few other things, hurdles that we anticipate will take place over the next couple of weeks when we start a brand-new opportunity like this. And I really want to thank all the people who are teaching in the portage program because they signed up to build a bridge as we walk across it, and for all the families. And we appreciate people's patience as we work through those inevitable startup quirks. And a lot of assignments were completed there. That's all I can say from talking to some of our staff. So, talked to Jenna Dartis this afternoon, and she said that the afternoon bus route went well. There was a mechanical issue with one bus this morning, but other than that, we're fearing that it was a very positive first day of school. So, an unusual one for sure, but a very positive one overall. So, I just wanted to share that announcement with you this evening.
Excellent. Board members have anything they would like to add? No, I think that, obviously, as well as today ran as a testament to the work that was done. This did not happen by accident, just for hours and hours and weeks and weeks of tired efforts to ensure that the processes were in place, communication was there, and everything that needed to be in place in order to ensure that today went well. So, again, it's a testament to all of the work of the administrators and staff and the families who all came together and worked on this. Okay, we'll move on to our first presentation, which we have Principal Greg Jono here from the middle school to talk about a report on the 1920 school year and 2021. Welcome, Greg.
Thank you. I can honestly say that I don't think I'd ever thought I'd be addressing the board from my house. And that's kind of a new thing, and it's a little bit awkward, but I think we'll manage just fine. So, good evening. I will echo what Matt said because we've been waiting nearly six months to get students back in our building and in classrooms. And it was very bucket-filling for all the educators that I know at the middle school, and I'm sure all of our buildings, to not only see students come into a building, but see them in classrooms and teachers do what they do best, making, building those relationships and teaching kids. So, it was a fabulous day for sure, and one that we're going to build off of. So, yep, you go to the next one, Matt. So, in thinking where I wanted to start, so we wanted to talk a little bit, first of all, about last year. And, you know, last year was different. But, as I like to, I told our staff multiple times, you know, a continuous improvement model runs pretty smoothly when things are going really well. But, it's really, you get to see just how much of a mindset you have on that continuous improvement model when you get to something a little more challenging, something that doesn't maybe go as smoothly. So, that's why I did this slide, you know? You never want to waste a good challenge, and you still are, you have wins, and you definitely want to celebrate and point those out. But, you look at the data, you stay true to your vision, and you look to do the what's next moving forward. Go ahead, Matt. So, last year's goals, the achievement goals, don't have to spend a lot of time on this. As we've typically done, we focused on MCAs as kind of our data point that we wanted to use, that map. And unfortunately, due to COVID, we weren't able to get those data points. So, I'm not able to report on the achievement goals from last year. However, the climate goal, I can. So, the climate goal from last year, we had, we really focused on, this is actually the third year of this goal, is we focused on, really wanted to sponsor activities every single quarter to get connected, build on that school spirit, and so, we continued that. And then, the second piece of that is that we really wanted to focus on transitions. And the transition from fifth to sixth, but also sixth to seventh, seventh to eighth, and so on. We did do surveys, we did get that in before things got a little crazy in the spring. So, we did get feedback on that, and we continue with our web events. We did our regular pride drawings, and then I added in there because when we went to distance learning, both Mr. O'Keefe and I did regular check-ins. We did webinars with, building-wide webinars twice a day, Mr. O'Keefe in the morning, myself in the afternoon, really to try getting kids connected. And the students that did log in, they loved it. As a matter of fact, parents loved it. We started getting a fair number of parents that would come in and watch our webinars and respond. And we had fun little games and things. I did photography, outdoor photography with students, and they submitted things. I showed student photos, and they had opportunities to win some prizes or earn some prizes based on either answers to trivia and so forth. And those prizes were sponsored by HCI, by the way. So, a big, huge thank you to them. But also, then, we gave both parents and students a survey asking about the transition, as well as how well do you feel that your student or student, how well do you feel you were prepared to go to the next grade level? And a couple interesting things, as you can see with the parent survey, the 92%, 87%, respectfully, those are a 6% decrease because we were so high last year. Hard to feel bad about when you get in the 90s or close to it. So, we'll keep working on that and see if we can get, get that back up a little bit higher. But, for the most part, our families did feel that the transition went well, and their students are well-prepared. The students on that flip side, was a little bit har, a little bit higher with their transition. They felt really comfortable coming to the building, which makes me feel good, at 96%. But, there is an interesting piece that I thought was the 87% of the families, the parents felt that their students were prepared, but the students only rated themselves at 74, and that is a pretty big of a difference. So, that is an area that we can work on. We want our students feeling good about themselves and feel like they're coming into the next school year prepared. So, it kind of gives us a starting point moving forward. Go ahead, Matt. So, some, a little data review. So, 51% of our students felt that they were supported during distance learning. 44% felt confident in their learning. 37% students felt anxious, which is pretty high. 55% of the students felt overwhelmed. That was immediately when I saw that, that was one that really stuck out to me that was concerning. And then, the middle school had, in my opinion, way too many failures, especially the seventh and eighth grade. Sixth grade was a little bit more in line with what you would expect. Or some eighth-grade numbers are way higher than I, that I'm comfortable with, or anyone, I should say, not just me. Our staff was not real happy with that either. 59% of our middle school failures were FRP students, and 47% were students of color. Grade seven and eight, we really, I focused on there is that they just need to do something different. One of the things that we did struggle with last year was getting students engaged. We had way too many students that just, not only not engaged during Zoom, but we couldn't give them the login to Zoom. And we had people calling parents, we had people texting students. We had some torch people actually go up to some houses. We sent police officers in some case for a little while to check up on students. And we just couldn't find a way to get them to consistently log on to Zoom and engage with their teacher, which was concerning. Students and family continue to feel supported by the school. That's kind of the glass-half-full thing. I mean, as much as we were kind of bummed out about the student performance piece, I was very pleased and happy that our parents actually still felt that the middle school was still supporting their kids and really working on things. So, I did like that. I do also, the last bullet point in there is it is possible for students to feel connected even in distance learning. And that was, I used with our staff the example, and some of our staff even pointed out, what Michael and I were able to do with our little sessions, we got kids connected. However, that being said, we weren't getting 100% connection there either. Our numbers are smaller in the afternoon, when the weather was nice and those types of things. But, it is possible, but we definitely need to do mind shift on how to get at that connection piece during distance learning. So, as we look at this year, we are going to focus on, for our achievement, we're really going to dig in and really focus in on those failures because that was, like I said, that was concerning. So, our goal is, our goal for this year is going to be that we'll decrease the total number of failing grades by 25% in sixth grade, and then 50% in grade seven and eight. As well as, middle school FRP students will have the same or lower failing rate as our non-FRP students, which is a lofty goal on both of those, but I feel strongly enough that we really need to go after that pretty hard. Climate-wise, I think we have a good start with this, with the first one being that we'll have family confer, we'll have a family conference, with 75% of our families at least twice during the school year, and we're off to a great start. We had about 98% of our families sign up for conferences last, last week, which was fabulous. So, we're well on our way with that. And then, as well as, Northfield Middle School will keep the percentage of students and families who feel the transition between grades was smooth, and students are well-prepared at or above 90%. And that's one that is, we want to have a continual, keep moving forward. The data we'll collect, we will send out parent feedback as well as student feedback survey, and then our teachers will really be digging into really the core standards and what really needs to be focused on. So, they're going to take their, their standards in their curricular area, and they're really going to boil it down to, okay, what are the essential learnings? What, what are the non-negotiables that our students need before they go to the next grade? Because, I mean, the hybrid's better than distance learning, in my opinion, but yet, it's still only in-person two days a week. So, trying to hit the full curriculum like we would like to do, and we typically would do, is probably not as realistic. So, we really need to boil down to where do we want to focus our energy and make sure students, when they are done with this grade and go into the next grade, the teachers on the next level can count on, these are the things that our students, we know they have them, and they've mastered them. Some strategies we'll use for the climate goal, we'll continue with web. We did, we worked pretty hard to find a way to get web to pull off what this, right before school started, we were able to do it in a kind of smaller scale. But, we did get some students in there, some sixth-grade students with eighth-grade leaders, and they got to get tours, and they were happy and excited to get in the building. We're excited to see them. The web program will continue and do their little, many lessons throughout the year. It may look different, it may not be quite as often, but we are still planning on keeping that program going as a cornerstone of the middle school. We also, again, we set our goal at 100% of families during that first week of school. 98. some percent is pretty close. And then, the avid strategies, avid is something that I, I came to the board last year and kind of as a strategy we're going to start, or kind of a journey, as I call it, we're going to start. We did train about 20 staff members this summer, even virtually, we trained them in a three-day training. So, we're really, we're continuing on that path. We're not setting avid aside, we're going to continue and keep pushing through. The strategies that avid teaches are good for all students. So, we want to really kind of add that in as part of our continual staff development at the middle school throughout the year, so that will happen. We'll focus, like I mentioned, on the essential learning targets in all curricular areas. And then, we'll continue to focus, as always, on our pride program because we really, more than ever, we need to continue to make sure that we don't lose sight of that, those relationships and building connection with kids to support them both socially, emotionally, as well as academically. So, that is our goal moving forward. That's what we're going to be focusing on this year, and I'll take questions.
Excellent report, thank you, Greg. Questions, comments?
Thank you, Greg. My question is, how do the middle school portage students fit into this paradigm? Or do they, are they completely separate?
Right now, the portage students are completely separate. I know we're working on a system, we have some families that have reached out looking forward to see if they can check out some supplemental materials through our media center. So, we'll get that going to be able to support them that way. But, they're really, the courses at portage are not connected to the courses at the middle school. As far as curriculum go, that's two different curriculums. So, that, that will be an interesting part of this, is if we have students that come back from portage to see kind of where they're at.
Do you think you might have any goals for the portage students, or have something, some way of measuring that to record back?
I would think that at a district level, since it's not just a middle school, that we probably, I would think it'd be a good idea to come up with some. I would like to see that any student that comes back, I'd love to have some type of screen, especially for math, for sure, so we can see where students fit in. I have thought about that as far as, I get a little bit nervous, no different than when we get a student that comes from out of state, and we don't know what curriculum or what type of foundation they have mathematically. Naturally, everyone comes back and tells us their students are, should be in an enriched program. So, we have to do some digging and see what's appropriate because the last thing you want to do is set a student up for failure. You want to really set them up for success and get them in the right class. So, I do think that we will have to have some type of way, whether it be through the MAP test, possibly maybe our best bet at this point. Haven't talked to Hope about that, but it seems to make the most sense, is to do something like that so that we get them into the right level when they come back.
I look forward to hearing what you come up with. Thank you.
Yeah.
Other question? Ellen?
Thank you for the report. I was really curious, Greg, and was really heartened that you're continuing that avid training, which is wonderful. But, the idea that we're not going to have MTSF in Will, and then the challenges that you expressed would do exactly what we worry about when the kids went to abrupt, we went to see, the students went to distance learning, and our teachers had to get on board so quickly. So, can you talk a little bit about some of the strategies, like maybe it's some of the new avid strategy? But, I guess I share your concern, and I'm happy that you have ambitious goals, and I want to know how we can support you with thinking about these, these students that you worry about.
Yep, absolutely. And the Will program's interesting because, so we've kind of, I actually, the more I've thought about it, the Will actually, maybe we may get an added benefit to that. Because part of Will won't be, and that's our eighth grade, one of our eighth grade support systems for our students, not in specialized, but are struggling learners. Even though we're not doing specifically the Will program, Natalie Amy, who's the teacher for that program, is, she is working with all study hall students for one of our eighth grade teams, and the EA that works with her is actually working with the study halls with the other eighth grade team. And the reason that's important is, I actually went through Ms. Amy's room today, and she is implementing strategies that she did with the Will program, actually with all students. So, it's, instead of having that smaller group of students benefit from her knowledge and her support, she's now expanded that. So, every eighth grader that comes through her study hall, and Miss Cannon's going to do similar, but not exactly, but she will support them academically because she's used to doing that. She's been in classrooms as an EA. But, now, I envision that we're actually touching more of our eighth graders. That's program through Edsys. That one's maybe a little bit more concerning, and I'm really hoping that with the smaller class sizes, excuse me, sorry, with the smaller class sizes that our teachers can do, well, they will have an easier time differentiating and really get more of that one-on-one time with students. So, we're hoping really to support kids that way. We've had discussions with our student support, with our, that team that we have, with the counselors and a social worker and psychologist, and Mr. O'Keefe and I, that we're probably going to have to pick up some of that slack as well, and just really look to support kids through our areas in addition to that. So, it, challenge, yes, is it doable? Absolutely. And we'll kind of take it a day at a time, once we get into this. I do think that our teachers are going, will be able to really seek students that need assistance more quickly, as well as be able to make a connection with that student on a more one-to-one level, where they couldn't in a class of 34, it was way more challenging versus a class of maybe about 13.
Thank you.
Yeah?
Rob, you have a question?
Yeah. First, I wanted to say, I kind of remember your report last year when there were actually some really positive signs, especially in math, and, and really, and to me, it was a sign that when your teachers identify a problem, they figure out a way to deal with it, and I, and I kind of feel like that same thing is going to happen. So, I, I think you have a really good staff who are really good at identifying these problems and, and coming up with a way to turn them around. So, and, you know, the students are back in the building, at least part of the time, to be in-person with those teachers to get some of that special care that they give. So, I commend you on that, and your staff especially. And I'm just wondering, with things like, I'm thinking about like algebra, which is not just an eighth-grade thing, it's also a ninth-grade thing, that there's the continuity between the middle school and the high school, and you're going to have a bunch of kids going into the high school who are going to be behind. So, are you working with the high school to figure out how you might have to adjust that transition?
Yeah, that's where that, the PLC work is going to be so critical this year. Really, when they're looking at those standards per, by each grade for pre-algebra, algebra, algebra II, and so forth, that, that's a key component. We absolutely, our elementary colleagues need to be able to connect with our sixth grade, and the same as our eighth grade moving forward with our high school. They're going to have to be in continual communication because, yeah, you are exactly right. And I don't think it'd be fair to students to say, well, you didn't meet all these standards, so you should, you need to be in a lower math class. I think as adults and as teachers, we're the ones that have to adjust. You know, our students didn't ask for this, it's nothing they could prevent. So, we have to make an adjustment, and I'll, it's going to be like a marathon. You know, you don't want to just sprint down, we're going to get them all caught up in a year. But, if we can kind of really all focus together and look at, okay, where are the, the key learning pieces that we want each year, and keep improving and kind of pushing them forward, and getting them a little bit closer and a little bit closer to being where they need to be, so they have that solid base. So, if they choose to do a post-secondary or a trade school, or whatever, they have the tools and those doors are, continue to be open for them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jeff, you have a question?
Yeah, thanks for your report. Looking at this, 51% students felt supported, 44% felt confident. You've got a supportive group, you've got a confident group of students, and then at 37, anxious, overwhelmed, and then failure. So, you know, what is it that this 51% group and 44% group, I mean, are two or three things that they're really doing well that you can, you know, build off of? And it's understandable, I mean, with, with the fourth quarter and having a pandemic, being a middle schooler, yeah, it's okay. Yeah, it's okay to be anxious, it's okay to be overwhelmed. And, you know, we've kinda worked through that the last quarter in the summer, and now this is something new, and I think for them to be around other students and stuff, but I'm just wondering. You know, how do we get the more anxious, overwhelmed, and the failures? Failure, I would think, just more just to get to participate, period. You know, what are a couple of things to get that feeling of anxiety and overwhelm gone? Get back to, you know, what the students and how, what we're learning to how to get them to confident and supportive.
Yeah, I think there's so many layers to this, but the, the areas that we really. When we designed our hybrid plan, when we came up with it, one of the things that I think did increase anxiety and cause parents. As well, and students and parents to get overwhelmed, was the middle school schedule is, it's large. It's, you know, there were students that would have up to nine classes that would take. And when you flipped it, all of a sudden, the distance learning, there's a lot to not only keep track of. But a lot to really, if you're a middle schooler, if you're thirteen or twelve. That's tough to stay organized for the vast majority of them. With due dates and where do I go for this in Schoology and, and it was really easy then to just kinda check out. They, they kinda saw their wheels spinning. So a couple of things that when we designed the hybrid schedule, it's one of the. The main reason actually that we wanted to split it up and really focus on what I'll call core instruction. With the math and the English and the social studies and the science, and the health and fire or state requirements. For in-person and really make sure we really hit those hard. And that's not to minimize our electives. Our electives are very important classes. There are some students that that's what they, they just, that's why they enjoy coming to schools for those electives, so I'm not trying to minimize that at all. But we really, knowing that students coming in, we kinda, I'll call it simplified the schedule for them. So it was pretty, they didn't have as much to juggle around. The other thing we did is we made, on fire and health, we made them semester classes, so that now cut off one more class that they didn't have. So instead of, some of those students had nine, they're now down to eight. So the other piece is, and we did it district-wide, is really kinda getting on the same page with Schoology. That's been for, ever since we started Schoology, one of the main. Concerns families had was they didn't know, depending on the grade level, depending on the class, where they go for things with Schoology. And really kinda being consistent across the board with that, and actually Hope and her team did a nice job. With the committee she did with teachers to kinda set up, here's, here's what we're all gonna be doing and where. Here's where parents, we can advertise, are gonna find things. So I think there was some process things that we've cleared up. That will help with that anxiety, which will help with the organization, which in turn will help with students be more successful moving forward. Did I answer all of your question?
It talks about how. The parents were surprised that their. That their kids couldn't handle distance learning. And they, they talked to you about that. And, you know, it all came on suddenly and everybody had to adjust. In the, in the time since then, and maybe at conferences last week, have you heard feedback from parents saying, okay, we have a. Maybe a better handle on it and. Different strategies on, on how to keep the kids engaged, or we're gonna have a parent home now where in the past we just hurt because everything. Happens so quickly.
Yeah, and this is just a general, I don't have data to support this, but in general, I, I seem, I get the sense that our families now have. Many of them made that adjustment. There is more and more families that said, hey. You know, can I get this cohort, because I have, this is the work schedule, and I really wanna be home during the time when my kids are home, things of that nature. And just to be clear, I mean, it's not one or two parents that came to me and said. I underestimated the effect this would have on my kid. I mean, I'm talking, I wish I would've kept track of the numbers. But there was a while that it was a few times a week, I was either doing a phone call or email or in person. When I could, see people out and about that would make a comment on this, and. I think it's, you know. You don't know how your kids are gonna react, and if your kid's always been an AB student forever, you kinda trust that that's just gonna continue. But they're still a middle schooler and they're still young adults and they still, we had more students than we would've liked, not have the. Tools to be prepared, but now we need to, since we, we know, we know now, so. Now we have to make sure we're supporting them, and I do, I think our parents have had a different mind, they've had a mind shift and a very. Large one, that they're, they're ready, and I think I could tell on the students' face when they came in. It was very different, even though. Masks aside, smaller numbers aside, you could tell the look on the students' faces when they came in that. All right, I kinda have to know what's going on here, and, and they did. And we had very few questions. As far as where do I go, how's this gonna work? They knew coming in. Kind of how the system works, the processes in place to support them, where they go, and. So I'm, I'm, I'm optimistic that. The system we have in place is gonna allow our students to be as successful as possible.
Excellent. Any other question? Board members, great question. Greg, thank you for the report and. So it, it just was clearly evident that you were, you know, very upfront about where those challenges are, but also you were determined to address them, so. So thank you for that, and most importantly, thank you for your leadership, having a sort of. Your tenure and your experience, your understanding of that, of those students. Thank you. And before we let you go, what is your background?
That's my happy place. Sharon and I, my wife Sharon and I, we love the mountains. That happens to be Estes Park last October. Obviously, well before the pandemic, so over MEA, we went hiking up in the mountains and. The colors are gorgeous and, yeah, it was phenomenal, so it's my happy place.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Okay, we'll go, I, we'll move now to Director of Community Education, Erin Bailey, for her. School Improvement Plan. Welcome, Erin.
Good evening. Thanks for having me tonight. Let Matt get all set up here. Perfect. So Matt, you can go ahead and move it forward one screen. In, in the packet, I was worried that the brochure cover didn't, didn't turn out quite this late, so this is our fall brochure cover. That went out in late August with the reminder that the, the Northfield Public Schools Community Education Department. Supports the learning and participation of adults and children in our community. We do this through citizen involvement, access to school and community resources, and promotion of collaboration and partnerships. In short, community education works to bring the community together, so if you did see our fall brochure, it was. Slightly different than the typical brochures that we publish. We, it is shorter in the fact that we put less detail in the brochure, so we put the month that classes are happening in, but. Left out some of the details around exact dates or locations and asked people to go to the website. Or call us for that information, just in the, in the chance that we needed to make any changes. In the timeframe from September to December, that those could be easily made without having a brochure that. Wasn't as accurate as we would be hoping for. So as we move to our goals, a review of goals from last year, the Community Education Department. Had three kind of bucket areas of goals. Those were around the use of data. We were working hard to determine of the data that we were collecting as a department and what we will do with it. We also then had a goal that was to determine appropriate space and programming needs for community education programs. And a goal around continuous improvement and really truly working to align with the Steward Education Group's best practices. Due to the nature of what our department looks like and, and the form for the site improvement plan being slightly different last year. We did achieve the vast majority of these goals. We did obviously have some just with the historic. Closure of school due to COVID nineteen meant we did not accomplish all of the goals we had on our list, and obviously we'll still work towards those this year. I did wanna spend time just to reflect on what that time period kinda from March through August looked like. For the Community Education Department, both in our programs that moved to distance learning, and then of course, the other programs such as childcare that we supported as well. So I will spend that, the, the next slide's just kind of reflecting on what that looks like. So in student engagement, one thing, and you probably have seen this as a great chart put together by Hope Langston, but one thing that. Did excite us in hand-in-hand is, as you can see, see student engagement stayed stable throughout the period of distance learning. So we have, we were a full section with preschool last year when we moved into distance learning, which is a hundred and forty-four. Students, and the makeup of our enrollment last year of those a hundred and forty-four students was. Sixty-five students or forty-five percent were free and reduced price lunch students. Twenty-five percent or thirty-six students were students of color. And forty percent or fifty-eight students were special education. So we were proud with the demographics that we have in our hand-in-hand program, that we really saw. A stable participation rate through the entire time that we had distance learning. We did use a number of tools for distance learning. We used seesaw activity packets and Zoom. So hand-in-hand, preschool, early childhood family education, and early ventures learning center engaged with students through seesaw and Zoom. We distributed one thousand two hundred and ten activity bags to five hundred and nineteen Greenville Park. Community school students, middle school youth students, and plus students, and that was just in a five-week period. And then we also, for the Greenville Park Community School, we distributed five hundred and thirty-five STEM kits to two hundred and thirty-one students. Then also in the early childhood area, we delivered two hundred and fifty activity bags and bins. These went to students that were enrolled in hand-in-hand preschool, that were enrolled in any of our birth-to-three services, that were enrolled in Head Start. And also some other community-based early childhood programs. And then, as you are all well aware, we did offer childcare. That was set up pretty quickly in March, and that was offered actually all the way through August, so. For our emergency worker childcare, that was offered to family of tier-one workers from March twenty-third through June fifth. And this would be for the school age portion of this, we served a total of a hundred and seven different children at this childcare site. And that doesn't count our summer numbers, so that would just be the children we served in what would have been the distance learning time. And of course, thanks to KidVenture staff and our educational assistants who also supported. Distance learning at that site in that time period. And then early ventures in that same time period, if you'll remember. Because we moved to a stay-home period for a portion of that time period and then started to transition back. We also just served our current families who were, had tier-one workers from the June thirtieth to. Or excuse me, March thirtieth to June third, and we served a total of thirteen different children at that childcare site. During that time period, and then of course, when we transitioned at this, after the, to the summer session, we did. Serve any child who wanted to come back to that program for the summer. Just a couple of things I wanted to highlight about some collaborative family supports that would've come out of this. We did survey parents in all program areas just to learn how distance learning did go for them. What we could improve on and things like that. We had a number of parents in our ECFE program, really call out that. I think much of like what Greg mentions as struggles as middle school students is actually just struggles. Of students, parents, families, all in general, when you talk about having a sudden change to distance learning. Everyone being in households altogether, childcare's closing or not being accessible, so we had a number of fam, ECFE families. Who really were quite gracious and talked, in how they just talked about. Not how they would've struggled to make it through this period of time if it was not for our parent educator, who is Ellen Hafner. And the support of other parents that they were able to connect with because of both our parent educator and our early childhood family education program. We continued to provide one-on-one parent counseling throughout that time. We also continued. All of our ECFE programs, distance learning, so that allowed kids to have time together. It also allowed parents to have time together, which. We learned became greatly important for the support of families and parents. Then also in ECFE and hand-in-hand survey feedback, one hundred percent of respondents. Replied that the circle time was very engaging in all of those program areas. And then I think just another great collaboration that happened was between having. Activity bags and meal distribution partner together, so when we distributed a lot of. Our activity bags, we partnered and followed the meal distribution site, so we would, we distributed to all the sites in Northfield. But then we would also go to Webster to Castle Rock. We did the entire meal routes too, which was a great partnership for not only allowing. Children to obviously get meals, but to also pick up activity kits at the same time. So as we move into our site improvement plan goals for this current school year. Our family engagement goal would be having adult basic education, early childhood family education, early ventures learning center. Hand-in-hand preschool, KidVentures, and the Middle School Youth Center will provide positive contacts to students and their families. This year, we'll have a hundred percent of students will receive two positive phone calls, emails, or notes from staff members prior to the end of the fourth quarter. An employee engagement goal, rounding conversations will be offered to a hundred percent of licensed and non-licensed staff. Working in the Northfield Community Education Center by the end of the third quarter. Our anti-racism goal will be a list of culturally appropriate resources will be provided. To program teachers to use with students during social emotional learning time, to ensure every child feels represented, represented. We are also in our program areas doing an inventory of toys and books, again, just to ensure that we have every child feeling represented. In learner outcomes, this, as you can see, we are looking at increasing our kindergarten and readiness areas. Both in hand-in-hand preschool and our early ventures learning centers, so. In the fall of twenty twenty-one, so when we look at our hand-in-hand and our early ventures, children that'll be heading into kindergarten next fall. In hand-in-hand preschool, we'll have eighty-five percent of students kindergarten-ready in reading, seventy percent of students kindergarten-ready in math. As determined by the math assessment. And then also in hand-in-hand, we'll increase the percentage of students moving from at-risk in the fall to not at risk. Or moving from at-risk this fall to not at risk in next spring, using the Minnesota Department of Education-approved assessment tool. In this area, we'll be looking at overall growth, and then you can also see for early ventures. We will have ninety-five percent of students kindergarten-ready in reading. And eighty-six percent of students kindergarten-ready in math as determined by the math assessment. And just so board members and others are aware, both of these kindergarten readiness goals reflect a five percent increase in reading and math. From their kindergarten readiness percentages in the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year. For stewardship, the Community Education Department will manage resources in response to instructional models to remain within the department budget. I think as we potentially move between instructional models this year, it does have an impact. On what we will likely see in program enrollment, so we will continue obviously to keep a watchful eye on that if we were to move. Among any instructional models. And then, of course, as you know, partnerships is a, is a large component of the Community Education Department, and so. Many of these are partnerships that are in the works as we moved into the Northfield Community Education Center that will be goals we will complete this year. So the Northfield Community Educate, or Community, Healthy Community Initiative is, will be housing four staff in our building. These staff include the early childhood navigators and others working on efforts to support families with young children. They two started to move into the space today, so they will be transitioning into the Community Education Center. In the, in the next week or so. The Community Action Center will operate a food shelf out of the Northfield Community Education Center, and of course, this food shelf will support families. In the building and those who live on the north end of Northfield. We have slowed the timeframe for this just a little bit. As you know, the Community Action Center is heavily involved in food distribution efforts right now, and so are really prioritizing making sure. Everyone has food access in the community right now, while continuing to develop that space within the building. The Minnesota Children's Museum will design and implement an indoor play space in the Northfield Community Education Center. This will be going in the former media center space, so in that large open space in our building, this is the first. Partnership the Minnesota Children's Museum has had with the school district. It is a very exciting opportunity for us. It was kind of, five of us went to visit the Minnesota Children's Museum about four days before. Things really started to close down last March, so we are very excited to get this moving. And have a planning meeting early next week to kind of keep moving forward with this. This will be installed roughly during the winter break timeline. This will be installed roughly um, during the winter break timeline. Um, funding is, i- is also in, some funding support for this pro- um, design and implementation is coming from Wings and the Northfield Promise through their Strive Together Opportunity Fund. And then um, through a generous Kaboom Grant, which you are all well aware of, the outdoor playground at, as is near completion. And to be honest, the, the playground is all in itself. We are waiting um, for some hosts to come that will be, hold the shade structures that will go over the two sandboxes. And there's some minor fence work to be completed, but um, I have been on that playground, I think, every pro- almost every weekend day since its completion. And there are people on that playground all of the time. It is very exciting to see, um, and it's exciting to just stand there and listen to the conversations about how excited people are about that playground. So that is um, a great partnership among Northfield Public Schools, the Northfield Healthy Community Initiative, Northfield Promise, and Strive Together. And then, of course, um, we will partner with community organizations to ensure a hundred percent of our students and families have access to their schoolwork. In whatever learning model we might be in this year. And through all of the family conferences we had last week, um, do feel prepared if there are students that need support in that, should we need that this year, we are ready to help. And knowing you probably may have not been in our building, this is um, this is what it is looking like right now. These are actual rendering drawings um, to, that the, but that WOLD has sent to us. But that is what the new space, um, you are standing kind of, this would be if you were standing in kind of one corner of the media center, looking down the first hallway. Um, and that, and obviously a design of what the playground looks like right now. And with that, I will take any questions.
Great. Thanks for your presentation. You're kind of like, you're being supportive, you know, students and families, you've said all since March. One of the things I'm not seeing in like, uh, family surveys, like how safe people feel, how they feel about the protocols for health and safety. I mean, that seems like it's been very good. I haven't heard a lot, I haven't heard about, you know, many cases of illness in the programs, but I'm just wondering how people feel about that.
Sure. Uh, that's a good, that's a good que- question, Rob. And, and up until, um, so through last, if you're looking at the time period from March till June, we obviously ran limited programming onsite. Um, we obviously ran the emergency childcare site, um, but other, other than that ran very limited. And as you know, saw, we had saw limited number of kids in early ventures. Um, over the summer, we did see a significant number of children, obviously, at our, I should say significant, though not as, not a typical summer of children for what we would see of KidVentures, but we ha- saw probably about sixty-five percent of the, what we would normally see in a typical summer. Um, we frequently checked in with them about kind of, or had discussions, probably more um, what I think, and as everyone probably in this group knows, the decision tree changed a few times throughout the summer. So we were frequently having conversations with parents um, about, you know, how, how that changed, then what that changes for them. And with every program, we always have a document that li- lists for people the safeguards we have in place for programs. So whether that was a summer recreation program, or a childcare site, or a preschool program, we always, so people are very clear, because we know that is part of, an important part of them making um, their decision process um, of what want, whether they will enroll kids in programming. So I think, Rob, it's a good whether we've actually asked that question specifically. We probably haven't yet, but have made more fielded calls from parents and talked through when they've had questions about what that looks like. Does that make sense?
Yep. And then I was wondering, um, you know, when Greg was talking about the, that's a, a large percentage of stu- students of color and FRP students were not being engaged during their distance learning. That kind of is just kind of uncovering a problem that might actually have been, you know, there all along. In a way, I'm just wondering what you can do at your end. I mean, if you look at this data further down the line and say, what can we do starting off to, to sort of make sure this doesn't happen later on?
So I think that is a why um, we, the partnerships we are trying to build in this building that, so we, one, obviously, we at times have children as young as three days old in our building. And so we want our efforts in our building to not only support you, your educational part of your child, but also to support you with food, to have adult basic education where you are supported as an, as a parent or parent education. And I think having other, so we obviously want to be open beyond just having schooling out of our, out of our building. In addition, I think having um, our partnership with the Healthy Community Initiative and having those early childhood navigators in the building increases the amount of bilingual staff we have. We certainly um, have bilingual staff in our early childhood programs, but this increases the level of bilingual staff we have in the building. Um, and also they are, do some oaths that we are, that help support our program. So they have a parent child plus program right now that um, for, is really important, I think, as we talk about COVID times, because it reaches for families who are uncomfortable leaving their homes right now. They are um, doing virtual home visits, they're dropping um, activity bags and other um, things that would support the learning that they are doing kind of on these, on their home visits, but are happening virtually right now. So I think part of it, Rob, is I think you're right, we need to address how we build relationships with people at a younger age. Um, and I think we are looking at that, that it doesn't, we're trying to build those relationships and not just an educational sphere, but in, in whatever families might be needing from us.
Great, thank you. No. Thank you for your report, very positive. Could you further explain the goal and responsibilities of the Minnesota children's, yeah, as a relationship?
Sure, so um, as, as we went through this process with WOLD of having user groups to design spaces, for all of you who've been in Greenville, the media center is kind of the prime um, focus of this building and just of its location and having all the classrooms around it. And then if, um, the way we have now, you know, as part of our remodel, when you come through our office and enter our building, it's even more of a focal point because of how open that, what used to be a classroom right there is now kind of open into the building. So this, um, this is a partnership, we, um, the user group, we explored many options and ideas of how to um, make that space warm, welcoming, um, and a learning environment for uh, children, while also being acknowledge, acknowledging the fact that classrooms line the outside of that space. And so keeping in mind that these are learning spaces on the outside. And so um, ma- we, one of the partnerships we came upon was every, what I think, when we worked through the user groups of what did we all envision in there? It was a setup that is similar to the Minnesota Children's Museum. So uh, five staff took a field trip there and um, explored what that could look like down here. They do many sort of setups. If you want to think of them as mini exhibit sort of setups in a, in um, healthcare sort of settings. So it would be very similar to what they do in healthcare sort of settings, except this would be their first time doing it within a, a public school district setting.
Thank you.
So I just had a couple comments. Um, I wanted to thank you for the presentation and uh, two things came to mind. One is, um, in some other districts, community education is very transactional. And it is so clear, given the unprecedented times, how important relationships have been to our community education and the job that you have done in fostering the, the navigators through the early childhood programs. Well, the things that you've been able to do despite the times is really remarkable. So thank you. And I guess I had a comment on the brochure. I know we heard during the levy that people still want that printed material. And I thought, what a nice balance. And I got it between this uncertainty and referring people to the website or call and providing information in a print form. So you did a really nice job of balancing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen.
I mean, um, Amy. Uh, thanks Erin for the presentation. Um, I have a comment and a question. Um, my comment is, I think uh, the partnerships with HCI and CAC are really very exciting. And I don't think the public has heard enough about them yet. And as soon as that really gets up and running, I think that will add such a wonderful extra utility to that um, building that'll be so helpful to so many people. So thank you for your work and partnering with them. And then my question is, the stewardship, um, I, you don't have to go into lots of details, but I know earlier on with the pandemic, you know, it was felt that um, your program or, you know, that would be hurt probably the most because you actually get income in. So do you have any sense how badly the budgeting is working out? Uh, or do you want to make any more comments on that, about how it's been impacted?
Sure. Um, so certainly what Amy is referring to is, uh, we, what is different between K-12 is obviously we are a fee-based program. We are, uh, we do receive, um, so if we're talking about preschool, we, obviously, we have fee-paying students, we have students that are accessing pathway dollars, which is the um, state scholarship funds. We have students who are accessing our own school readiness funds. And then obviously, we have special education students. So it is a mix of um, those fundings all braided together to support that. Now, I think we um, for the first time in a long time are not full in these programs. And so we'll continue to watch. Um, and I think depending on if, being in person, um, as we start here is certainly helped. Um, having students in the building, I think what will, could impact us is if we were to move to distance learning. At this point, we are pretty well set up, um, should we need to move to a hybrid learning model at some point, um, in that we have, the way we have situated students is they are already potted. Um, and would be, would not cause much work to transition them to that just because of the way we started this, with the way we were intentional about setting up at the start of this year. I do think if we move to distance learning, we could see um, families make a choice um, of whether to continue in distance learning or not. While I know we certainly received um, very stable participation in that last year. If it was to be a longer period of time, I, I'm not sure whether we would see that again or not. Um, so those, Amy, I guess, has been when we'd have to, we do just have to, we are going to have to continue evaluate this throughout the year. Um, just our participation numbers. And I think they will tie, tie closer this year with um, the way we are, the model we are attending school.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you Erin, thanks for the great reporting for your work. And you kind of had to boldly go where no one had to quite gone now this summer in terms of establishing summer ventures and some of the community education programs you were able to offer. Because you knew your family were looking for them. And you and your team were really dedicated and committed to try to get some of those opportunities for our family. Thank you for that and for uh, I, I was heartened today to think of uh, all of the kids um, and coming into the building and wishing that you were part of celebration, I think, with them and being in their new space.
Yes, we will, we will look forward at, at a later date to welcoming, um, as part of the Kaboom Grant too. We have funds available, so whenever we, um, whenever it is safe to have a large gathering of people, we will be welcoming everyone to the playground and to this, to the building.
Thank you Erin. Okay, um, we now welcome Hope Langston for a rep of instructions. Welcome Hope.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to be here tonight. All right, here we go. Um, I'm pleased to offer you tonight a brief update on our new department and what we've been working on since uh, July one. Here you see our department mission, which we wrote last, uh, actually, actually last spring into early summer. As we merge two departments, Assessment Services and Teaching and Learning. So our goal, um, and our mission is to strive for excellence in teaching and learning with a commitment to maximizing student outcomes within a system of continuous improvement. And so really, we're working in collaboration with our schools and with departments to both um, provide evidence-based and inclusive learning and teaching practices, use our data both within professional learning communities and within the classroom, and to provide robust professional development. Here's our team. Uh, you know many of these people, but uh, it's been great to have this core group of people working actually since June. So Debbie O'Meara is the administrative assistant to split her time between uh, tech- technology services and instructional services. And then you have the coaches with their masks and without. Carrie, Michelle, Alicia have been all jumped in with both feet. And uh, we are learning as we go, for sure. So the scope of our work, what we are covering, Matt, you can jump to the next slide. It, uh, there's so much we're covering, we didn't, we didn't fit it with the title. So you can see, again, a lot of overlap and inter-related activities between what uh, Teaching and Learning did and the Assessment Services Department did last year, both supporting district operations, coaching staff members, and then PD, both at the district level and supporting what's happening in uh, the building. So I'm not going to go through each of those, but as you can see, we are covering a lot of ground. And we certainly have a learning curve because the whole team is new. Uh, people have been tremendously supportive and helpful to us. Just shout out to Val who's in this meeting, because we're, we're uh, learning a lot about the whole budgeting process, starting from Debbie on up to me. Um, so just a lot to learn, but it's, people have just been tremendously patient. So I really appreciate that. So when we jumped in this summer, we had the, the added, um, the added element of pandemic planning. So we, we knew we needed to launch the workshop week, because that's really where our staff starts. And we knew that that really is the start of our school year. So layered in with the pandemic planning was uh, how are we launching our, our staff? And one of the things that was really critical based on feedback is that people wanted a more of a selection and differentiation in their staff development. Um, and so we had a mix every day of required trainings, and then two of those each day, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And then they were able to uh, choose from a self-selection menu that includes thirty-nine different choices. Uh, and those are the areas of interest. So um, in the required trainings, the first thing we did was respond to feedback from the instructional planning team that helped to put together um, the components for this unusual school year. And one of the pieces of feedback was that it's really sometimes difficult to find information that's needed. And so we built a website, that's the Instructional Services website. And that website is meant to be the one-stop shop for staff in everything they might need to know or learn about. Uh, and so that website is live in the staff portal. And then you heard Greg talk a little bit about the consistency requirements. Um, that was a required training, because that was a consensus that we uh, reached based on feedback from parents and families and staff, actually, that work with multiple students about the need for greater consistency in how we organize uh, coursework and materials on Schoology. So the team came up with some key components, and we wanted to make sure everybody heard the same message during workshop week. Um, we've already had actually some great uh, feedback that we received from a parent just um, talking about how easier, much easier it was to navigate Schoology. Um, so that's something we're in, continue to work on. Because again, we don't want our tools to be a barrier for students. We want our tools to help them access uh, their schoolwork. And so the consistency, while one person may not realize it in a single class, when you have seven classes a day, it might obviously become a battle if everything is organized differently. So that was a key um, required training. Then we had um, two SEL uh, presentations and shout Then, we had two SEL presentations and shout out to HCI and the Northville Promise SEL team for sponsoring these. But one was for adults and our staff members putting your oxygen mask on first and how you can develop a personal self-care plan. And then, the second one was supporting your students in a pandemic year. And then, we also had sessions that, that were required on EL, Academic Language. And really, the strategies used for EL students are good for all students. And then, the family conference layout and what that might look like. So, these, you know, one thing that you learn when you offer a lot of choices is there's a lot of legwork to lay that, that whole Workshop Week out. And so, shout out again to the coaches who really produced a lot of these materials and, and worked super hard all summer to, to get this ready. So, that's how we launched our year. So, just looking at our priorities, short term, I'm, the portage launch has actually been an ongoing significant time commitment from the team just because there's many layers to the enrollment process and getting the coursework set up at the secondary level. We also, as you can imagine, had many changes in enrollments. Parents deciding, changing their mind, which again, in a pandemic year is completely understandable. And it was also, you know, really, we had a month to get this portage option set up. So, we believe that we made the best decision possible, knowing what we needed to do. And we are still working out some of the challenges that we are running into. We have a great team of teachers at the elementary and secondary level who are helping to problem-solve some of the things we're running into. And I think, again, whenever you're developing something while you're using it, I think we all just need to make sure that we are listening to feedback and then adjusting as we go. So, the portage launch continues to be something that we are very much invested in, making sure that it gets off the ground smoothly. Then, we're starting universal K-5 screening this week. And that's happening at our elementary schools. K-5 met with that team today, who's going to help with the K-2 screening. And then, and then it's really me digging in and how we are responding to what that data tells us. Because we know that we haven't, we, this will be our first look at our kids with the one, with the metrics that we're using, DIBELS and MAP, since the, the school shutdown in March. So, we're really curious to see both what our data tells us and also ways we can look at responding to that, those needs, given the staffing changes of this year. Greg talked a little bit about Critical Core work and PLCs. Again, we felt it was super important to give acknowledgement that this is not a typical year. And, and we are not able to cover the same amount of content that we would in a normal school year. And that is the work of our PLCs this year. The team began working on this across, cross-district team. K-12 began working on this work this summer. And that will continue to be the work of the PLC teams, both within buildings and across buildings for the school year. We also know that our equity work needs to continue and stay at the forefront of our minds. So, that's one built-in piece to PLC work as well this year. And the last short-term priority is just the learning curve. When you throw, when you put a new team together and then you add in pandemic planning, you know, we are just, we, I'm just so pleased with the work of the team because this, this is not easy. And, and we're all learning, but everybody has had an incredibly positive attitude. And we take one day at a time and one task at a time, and we move forward. Long-term, you can see that, yes, we need to continue our science standards update and that the focus will be at the middle school. We are working on building a district MTSS process. And that is happening, that we are responding to families instead of individual students in individual buildings. We want to make it more streamlined and efficient. And we know that oftentimes, attendance issues can be related to something going on in the family. And rather than having, you know, different people from different buildings going after the issue, we, we want to have a more streamlined approach. We will continue through that Critical Core to look at pre-K-12 vertical alignment. We have the support of the Regional Center for Excellence. It's working with Darrell on our EL program to update our service plan. And then, just taking a look at our whole curriculum review cycle and the process for reviewing curriculum. So, those would be the longer-term priorities of the department. So, that's it in a nutshell. I'll take any questions.
Great, thanks. No questions or comments?
Thank you for your informative report. I would congratulate your department for the work they do to keep the staff informed and engaged so that it's clear there's continuous improvement. I think that's quality that's unique to probably perhaps in Northfield.
Thank you.
Erin?
Thanks for your report, Hope. And thank you for all the work you're doing with the portage and all of the things that have happened in the previous month leading up to today. I was wondering if you could talk a little bit more about the long-term science standards? If you can say a little bit more about, I'm just curious with COVID, it's a how that, you know, I know when this has come out that this is going to be a lot, a heavy lift for us. It's going to take some time, but I wasn't sure, given all of the unprecedented times of what, what we were looking at from the kinds of that.
So, the science standards change is going ahead as planned. So, at the elementary, we're covered because they adopted the, a new curriculum this summer for the science specialists. So, they are already adopting the new science standard. So, the next step is the middle school. And in the timeline for the state this year is the year that they are supposed to be reviewing curriculum. The MCA still aren't slated to change for another two years at the minimum, although I don't know, given the COVID disruption for MCAs, whether that's really going to happen. So, as far as we know right now, the timeline stands for science adoption.
Amy?
Thank you for the report. I just wanted to say that I'm really excited about this new department and all of the potential that you have and all of the things that you're working on and how engaged and excited you are about the process. I just, I'm really looking forward to seeing where you take your team and how you work with the teachers and the students to continue making Northfield Public School Systems better and better. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great. Rob?
Thanks for your report. I'm curious about the MAP tests because, I mean, with any of these, well, the MCAs, there was a gap and there's going to be a gap in the data from MAP. So, I'm just wondering about how you actually determine growth? I mean, because you're going from, I'm assuming, from last fall to this fall? So, there's no spring data and, and there are other factors that are, you know, that influence how much growth students will have made. So, it just seems like a very difficult problem to, to figure out what growth you are expecting. And, you know, it's not going to be the same growth that you would have gotten if none of this had happened. So, how do you analyze that data to determine what, where you are and where you want to be?
So, that's a great question, Rob. And it's the, the burning question for a lot of people right now. I feel actually fortunate that MAP does, NWA does calculate a fall-to-fall growth rate. So, while we know that we likely, I actually, I don't even, I, I would say that I'm not ready to predict. I'm guessing what's going to happen is we're going to see kids who came out of this fine and we're going to see kids who, who didn't, who, who had less growth than we would have anticipated. But we do, you know, everybody took the fall MAP last fall in 19. So, in some ways, I feel fortunate that, you know, we, we are able to give that at the elementary level in the in-person model. Now, at the secondary level, we typically would test in the fall for the middle school. And we just do not want the teachers to give up some precious hybrid in-person time to do a MAP test. So, we are, I have been in discussion with a couple of teachers at the middle school. And, and there is interest in the math department to kind of figure out where kids are at. And I totally understand that because math is where NWA is saying kids had the most loss during distance learning in their research. And so, I think that we, at the elementary, we will go for it. And we're going to give the fall MAP because we need that information to help support kids and accelerate their growth. We need to know where they're at. And then, at the middle school, we will go on a case-by-case basis. If the, depending on what the teacher wants, but know that it is not a requirement at the secondary level because of the hybrid model. And should we flip at the elementary level to either a distance or a hybrid model? We will not actually administer the MAP. But we are going to do a little pilot with our portage kids. And because MAP has set up the distance learning scenario for testing. And so, we actually want to see what happens in the fall in that model with our portage kids, just to see what that looks like. But, but right now, the assessment schedule says that MAP will be given in an in-person model only as a district requirement.
It seems like from part of the things I've heard that what's going to, one of the things you're going to find is that the, the achievement gap or opportunity gap is going to widen even more. And I'm just wondering, you know, one of the things the state requires is the world's best workforce. I'm wondering if that's going to make any difference? If they're expecting different things from us because of the different situation we're in?
Yeah, and I, I'm asking the same question. Now, I didn't check today, but as of last week, they hadn't updated the world's best workforce site. So, we don't even know what the new report template looks like. The 2021 is not, was not there as of last week. So, your guess is as good as mine right now, but we're all sitting out there with big holes in our data. And, and I just think they're going to have to adjust. What's interesting is, you know, I have had to file the Read Well by Third Grade report. And they did make an adjustment in there. And they said, just, just pick your last complete data set. So, we had Fall of 2019, and that's what we reported on. So, I think, you know, everybody's sort of looking for our new path when we have holes in our data and how we're going to be able to move on from here. But our goal right now is understanding where our kids are at right now and what kind of supports they need to, to accelerate their growth if they have had learning loss over the past six months.
Thank you.
Yeah.
To follow up on Rob's, one of, what we learned out of all this is that tests aren't the way to figure this stuff out. That right now, we, I mean, we're, it's all data-driven. We're taking tests and we're comparing tests to tests. Maybe because we're, we're lacking that, we have to look at other, other ways to figure out how, how the streets are growing or not. And maybe out of all this, like you said, it will be a new path.
Yeah, I think that's something that, you know, I'm on an MDE District Assessment Advisory Committee. And that, that's something that has certainly been talked about. You know, are, are there other ways that we can look at student performance? And I think that you are right, Tom, that we are going to be looking for new ways, right? And, and it, and it's probably time for that. And, and the pandemic has forced our hand on a number of things. And that's part of the exciting thing is, yeah, it's, it's messy. But, but we're, we're going into some new ways of doing things that are actually beneficial for, for our students. And so, I think we're going to go ahead and start because we need to meet the MDE requirement for dyslexia screening. So, we will go ahead and start with DIBELS. We will go ahead and use the MAP because we at least have some comparative data. And then, from there, as part of this Critical Core work is, is for teachers to identify, how are you going to assess mastery? And really, that classroom data is the most powerful of all. And so, I think that's something that we need to continue to develop and utilize as we look at student performance.
Any other questions or comments? Hope, thank you very, very much for all your work. For excellent report. Okay.
Thank you for having me.
Moving on now to financial update. Don Murres, Director of Strategic Director of Finance.
Thank you. So, I have a couple of updates tonight. The CRF funding, which is the million dollars, just over a million dollars that we received, that application is due October 1st. So, we have been working across the district to identify the various ways in which we can maximize that funding. And so, we've got probably a total of about 1.3, just shy of 1.3 million of things that we've identified that some are already in place, like the Odyssey Ware for the portage students and some things that we're, we're still fleshing out about whether or not we think we can do them. And so, we're working through that. But that application is due October 1st, so we'll be submitting that very soon. We were made aware that some of the other districts that have been submitting their applications have had items denied that they had requested, which was a little surprising because the state has overall had a message of, you know, supportive, do what you need to do. So, that was a little concerning. So, we're hoping that, I mean, all of the items that we've identified are absolutely supporting COVID and the learning and all of the things that we need to be doing. So, I'm hopeful that that won't be the case for our district, but that will be known once we submit the application. So, we'll keep you posted with that. We were also notified recently that the State High School League made a very significant increase in their annual membership fee. So, we have historically paid probably $3500 or $3600 a year to be a member of the State High School League. And that certainly comes with several benefits for our coaches and our teams. They obviously are losing a significant portion of their operating revenue, not being able to have tournaments. I'm pretty sure the tournaments, they said, was like 70% of their total revenue for the year. So, that's a pretty big deal for them. However, they're passing that on to districts, which is a little concerning. So, they have a 382% increase for our district. So, we'll be paying about $17,532 this year. So, we were just made aware of that last week or the week before, I believe. So, so that's another, another thing coming at us. Those are my COVID updates, which I think was primarily the intention of the financial update. But because I have the floor, I also wanted to update you about the Northfield Gymnastics Club. So, probably two and a half or three weeks ago, we were contacted by the club. They have a new board and are interested in having a new lease with us for the high school team this fall, assuming they get to practice. We don't know, obviously, how the winter sports will go yet, but they are very interested in having us back in that facility. So, we are working through a draft lease agreement. I'm working with our attorney to draft that. And then, we'll work with the new board president at the gymnastics club to kind of settle on all of those details. And the reason I wanted to bring it up is because And the reason I wanted to bring it up is because of the timing with scheduling and planning a schedule, they have to do it pretty far in advance and allowing time to get our equipment out of storage and in the facility. I'm going to probably bring that to the next board meeting and ask for approval. The lease amount will be a little bit more than our historical lease, but it'll actually be fairly similar to what we were paying for Farmington. And so I'm anticipating kind of in that $10,000 to $15,000 range. Three years ago, we were paying about $7,500, so definitely a reasonable lease increase. So we're excited that they have a new board, and they're willing to work with us again. We'll certainly have, I would say, a stronger lease in place just to ensure that some of the things that occurred the last couple of years will hopefully be alleviated, but that will be coming at the next meeting, hopefully. So just wanted to give you an update about that as well. And also, our community ed program has a rec gymnastics, and they will also be leasing. And I believe program is starting September 20th. So that's exciting to be able to be back in that space, and hopefully all will go well there. So I think that's all I have for today. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Quarter of his questions, comments?
Well, thank you. Yes, gymnastics, really exciting. That will be heavy versus $15,000. But I'm wondering, as news and word gets out, certainly athletes, families, coaches are going to be excited. Is this more broadly known? When, you know, when would it be communicated so that, you know, there's, it seems like you're certain that will come to fruition, but when might, you know, as word sort of starts to disseminate around the, you know, the potential that, you know, do you get a sense that people are aware that this, that this will likely happen?
So I would say our team and coaches are for sure aware that the conversation is happening. And, I mean, we've, we met onsite at the gymnastics club last week or the week before just to see the upgrades and kind of renovation that they've been doing. They had a grand reopening last Friday, I believe. And so our coaches and I would assume some of the girls on the team have actually been helping volunteer to kind of fix it up and get it ready for that. So they've been very vocal about wanting us back in the space, which is great. We're more than happy to collaborate and be back with, in town and in that facility. So I think team-wise, most of them are probably already aware that it's a real possibility. That's obviously our first preference as a district because it's local and in-town and the history's there for that program. So community-wide, I mean, they clearly had a grand reopening. I don't know how much communication they've done on their end, but outside of tonight and this meeting, I would say this is probably the first very public time it's been talked about. But I don't think it's a secret that either of us would like to, that the district would prefer to be there. That was always the case. It just didn't work out that way, so.
Great, thank you. Thanks for the update.
Yes.
So we will move on to superintendent state of the district overview and reminder to remember that report is, was in your table.
One second here.
So good evening. And whoa. Hold on, I turn that off. Sorry about that. I do feel like I could produce a pretty good telegraph show now, but... So this year's state of the district overview is slightly different. If you recall, a few years ago, we streamlined the approach once, and we, after last year's presentation, we got a lot of positive feedback when Willie and I talked, and we determined it was time to give it another revision and look at streamlining it even a little bit further. You know, the state of the district could be a three-hour presentation, and what we decided to do is really prioritize the few things under our strategic commitments. We started the CSU's, these strategic commitments of people, learning outcomes, stewardship, and partnerships. You notice that they tie directly to the district's vision statement, and so we're going to try to organize these a little bit differently so that we can become more efficient in sharing the biggest things that are facing the district, there's a lot in each one of them, and then we can have conversations with people about what each of those things means. So I'm briefly going to go through the celebrations and challenges in each of these areas. We'll start with people, and what I share with you is two celebrations. One was around distance learning and the work that we did around communication. I want to point out, I'm calling this emergency distance learning because that's really what it was last spring. It was emergency distance learning. So 87% of over 1,000 parents rated the district's communication as either excellent or good. And we shared that with you before, but we know that when we have good communication, there are positive outcomes. When we think about the other celebration that we determined for people last year, you recall, we did a parent survey with two years in a row now with our friends from Steward Education, and that annual parent survey saw across all 17 indicators a rise from 4.09 to 4.108 on the district's overall rating. And we have a large survey like this, 1,000 people or more, moving even that amount is pretty substantial. So we thought that that was a win. And of course, something that really warms my heart is that we saw the increase in the average from 2019 to 2020, where my family is treated with respect at the school, increasing from 4.38 to 4.49. And we look at 4.5 as the gold standard. If we hit 4.5, we think we're doing really excellent work. So we'll continue to move that forward. Under people, the challenges are pretty obvious, right? COVID-19 is a challenge for all of us. There's ongoing hurdles that are going to be throughout the year. The different learning models, the different learning modalities, the in-person, the hybrid, the portage model, are all going to create disruptions in ways that we had anticipated and ways that we didn't anticipate. So that is a challenge for this year. And in addition, when we look at our staff, the impact of illnesses on our staff and our student chills occur will create another circumstance where we're going to continue to try to support all of our learners and all of our staff in a way that we can honor their work and make sure that we support them, that they can be here, but they're well enough to learn or teach. We're going to really try hard to make them be part of our overall community. I've shared that with you before as we talked about the striving together document. And then finally, you know that I'm concerned about the urgent, which is the pandemic, crowding out the incredibly important. And when I'm talking about this, I'm specifically talking about the district's anti-racist work. We know right now we are trying to launch the school year in this very unusual manner, and yet we want to make sure that we don't lose this really important anti-racist work that we have had a good start on. When we think about the implicit bias training, the cultural competency work, the fact that we have continued to meet with groups of stakeholders to, again, endeavor toward having a truly anti-racist, not the school district, but community. I'm not doing a prezzi, but it's kind of like a prezzi in the fact that moving to these various platforms. I'm going to look at the learner outcomes next. The learner outcome, when we look at the celebrations, we had 86% of parent respondents in the emergency distance learning survey in June rated quality of activities as either excellent, good, or average. When you think about the amount of time that we had to turn this around, it was fairly impressive. We've talked about that a number of times. We cannot lose sight that last year was year two of our elementary schools' change in literacy curriculum. So the fact that we did year two, and we worked on doing year two very well, because year one, everything is new, year two is where we start to cement some of the strategies. And prior to the shift to emergency distance learning, we had completed a third survey over two years of our teaching staff around the Center for Collaborative Classroom Curriculum. And 85% of teachers responded, respondents indicated that they were prepared to help students achieve grade level standards in literacy. We think that's an important indicator. And so we thought that that was a celebration of trying to cement those routines, and then even doing so in the difficulty of emergency distance learning. Under the challenges, again, the planning for multiple learning models is going to present challenges for learner outcomes. You've heard us talk about the critical four, and that we need to make sure that we're focusing on what are those power standards that we have to make sure kids get in order to be prepared as much as they can for the next grade. And while we do have confidence that we can do this well through these different potential learning models, the fact is that shifting from one gear, no one has done that yet. We have not done that in Minnesota, and so that is one of the things that creates a challenge. The final challenge in learner outcomes is about making sure that we serve every learner, and our approaches to closing our unacceptable opportunity gaps continue to require adaptations in each learning model. So as Rob had said before, there's some pieces nationally that are talking about in this unusual time and the shifts related to the pandemic, that we could see the opportunity gap increase, which of course is not what we want to happen. We do have a team of people who are very intent on not allowing that to happen in Northfield, and you heard from Greg Jellinor earlier about the different ways that we have attempted to reach every learner, phone call, showing up to people's houses, text messaging, use a variety of different communication techniques that are well above and beyond what we've done before, and yet we still are struggling to see the needle move in a way that we would like. So we know that that will continue to be a unique opportunity for us and a challenge. When we take a look at stewardship, I'm very proud to report to you that the, I was at that Greenville Park building this morning, it opened for school, it was completed on time. The Sibley Project is also a wonderful, beautiful addition, and those projects were completed on time, as was the Bridgewater, the Bridgewater office over just a little bit later. But right now, we are projecting that those referendum projects will come in under what we had told the voters that they want. So while they're still long-fell to complete, our current projections I've shared with you before are looking that we will be able to deliver those projects for a good amount of money, less than what we had told the voters during the referendum campaign, largely due to the excellent interest rate that we got. Something I considered putting on the celebrations tonight, but we haven't quite finished it yet, is the bond refinancing that we'll be doing, and we'll be asking to authorize later this evening. That work, that bond rating that we have, Val Murders' work, and the legacy of the previous finance directors who have come before her, really have put us in a position where we could get excellent and first rate that really helped us do more than what we thought we could do, and frankly, for less than what we told the voters. The district also, going from that big picture to the fact that we pay attention to the small thing as well, we did do an incredible, pretty large shift last year from old inefficient copiers and printers to where we now have expanded to multifunction devices. These are devices that print, scan, and copy at a fraction of the rate of what it would have cost before. Our estimated savings per year is $19,000. That doesn't sound like a lot, but the point is, this is an example of the fine team component that we go through to make sure that we're providing a great service, but also doing at a very, at the most reasonable rate that we can. I really appreciate Director of Technology Services, Kim Bruski, and Director of Finance, Val Murders, who really led that last year to make sure those things were installed and that people are able to print to them. It's really slick. You can print to them, and you can take your badge and print it from anywhere in the district. So any place that there's a copier or a multifunction device, you can release your print job. So those two celebrations in stewardship represent both ends of the spectrum, but we think it's important for the community to know that we look at both. The challenges, of course, you already heard Val talk about the challenges of COVID. We've had several questions tonight about the financial challenges of COVID, and we want to say how grateful we are to the federal government for the CARES Act and the coronavirus relief funds. They're helpful, but they are stopgap measures. So for, by way of example, we used $291,000 of the CARES Act to cover the unreimbursed emergency childcare that we did last spring. And so when we look at those things, the COVID long-term financial challenges are going to be big, not only from the revenue side, then we flipped to the second challenge in stewardship, where we're looking at the state of Minnesota's financial forecast. Talk about a flip. It flipped from a projected $1.5 billion surplus to a $4.7 billion deficit. We all know what happens when there's a big deficit in the state. Not only do we not get an increase to the per-people basic formula, they also do a shift that gives us less of our money in the year that it was earned. Now, that impact is not going to just have an impact immediately, it's going to have an impact long-term. You know that many of our long-term financial projections are based upon very conservative increases to that per-people basic formula. We know that there will have to be a budget adjustment process this year. We knew that was going to have to happen, and now this financial uncertainty because of the COVID and the pandemic, it's going to make it even more important that we have that budget adjustment process. I'm calling it a budget prioritization process, really to look at how do we set our budget to fund our vision in the most efficient way possible for the next several years. Finally, in partnerships, when we look at partnerships, we are so grateful, we've heard it several times tonight, with Growing Up Healthy and the Northfield Healthy Community Leadership, outstanding partners. And we look at one example, when we shifted to emergency distance learning last year, you read lots of things about districts taking months to get internet access to students. And with Hope Langston leading the way, as well as partnerships with Growing Up Healthy and with HCI, we got internet to 65 different families within about a week, frankly, with a week to 10 days that we got that going. And we could not have done without that partnership. The second partnership is thinking about Northfield Promise. We have lots of different positive pieces with Northfield Promise, but we have a very heavy representation on their, Northfield Promise Equity Team. And that team is working to inspire a broader community partnership to support the anti-racist work, including reaching out to the colleges, the city, the hospital, and other entities within the community. The challenge is, when we think about these, we're looking at the fact that the district is, we love our charter schools, as you all know, we're one of, now only two public school districts in the state that still go through the rigorous process of being a charter school authorizer. We are up for recertification as an authorizer this year, and that is some time-intensive work. So that is a challenge in terms of continuing that partnership to make sure that we can continue to be a certified authorizer. And we have the added bonus that we have a chance to renew the Prairie Creek contract this year. Anytime we're up for a contract, there's some additional work that happens. So we love that partnership, but this is also a challenge for both organizations on the timeframe that it takes to do that, again, considering all of the other things that we're working through. And finally, while we want to highlight and lift up the relationship that we have with the Rice County Public Health Department, these people are fantastic, it's been a great partnership. But the challenge is going to continue to be implementing the decision tree that Aaron mentioned before. The decision tree will cover what are the circumstances when someone may have to stay home from work or for school? We've done a webinar about that with local physicians and Rice County Public Health, but we know it's not going to become real for people until they are impacted by that decision tree. And so that partnership, working with Rice County Public Health to make sure that folks understand what it means, what the decision tree means, when they need to stay home and quarantine or isolate, we know that that's going to be an ongoing challenge through the year. So that is the newly streamlined celebrations and challenges for the year, trying to give you enough substance while doing it in an elevator speech kind of way, if that makes sense. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Excellent, thank you. Questions?
I just wanted to say it's a good thing that you changed out those copiers because now you can afford to pay for the Minnesota State High School League.
Different financial year, Rob.
I was just wondering about the, in the people section, the parent survey on my family, my family is treated with respect at their school. Do you disaggregate that data? So, I mean, if you're talking about, for example, the anti-racist work, if you know, like, the students of color respond differently, or their families, et cetera?
So we have not done that demographic disaggregation or asked that question in previous surveys. So we have not done that demographic disaggregation or asked that question in previous surveys. It is something that we are considering adding as we move forward.
Other questions or comments? Ellen?
So I, I knew this one would have sort of the, the unprecedented time would obviously be on here, but I was thinking about all the things that had happened prior to March. And one of the things that really struck me was the work that has happened with the Center for Collaborative Classroom Literacy Curriculum, which has been going for a while, but how wonderful it is that that has gone through the implementation, has had its legs. And then I think about the work that's happening at the buildings this year with, um, having the portage option for online and the three elementary schools doing their own in-person instructions and having to flip, and how wonderful it is that that has happened. So I think a lot of credit to you in terms of the work that has happened up until March. And I just would want to recognize that there's many more things that we could be celebrating about that. And, and why it's helping us to be as strong as we can be under these circumstances. So thank you.
My pleasure.
Excellent comment. Other questions, comments? Okay. Thank you very much for the reporting, most importantly, for the work and the achievements. As Ellen had said, Alex had said that that led to the success going forward. Thank you. Okay. We'll move on now to the consent grouping. As a reminder, there were, um, a number of personnel items in the table file to be added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping for separate consideration? Um, is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Amy. Is there a second by Ellen? All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, let's move on to items for individual action. We have, um, four this evening. The first item is approval of policies five twenty-two and four eleven that were presented at the August twenty-fourth meeting. So is there a motion to approve policies five twenty-two and four eleven as presented? Moved by Rob. Is there a second? Second by Tom. Any questions or comments on either of these two policies? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our second item, um, for individual action is the superintendent goals for twenty-twenty-one. And just as a reminder, there was an updated, um, version of the goals in the table file. Um, and they were initially presented by Dr. Helman Dar, August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four meeting. So is there a motion to approve the superintendent's twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one goals as presented? Moved by Jeff. Is there a second? Second by Amy. Questions or comments?
I think I just could comment that when they were reviewed, um, by Dr. Helman at our, um, August four meeting, they were enthusiastically approved by the board and felt like those, uh, the vision and the, and the priority were well placed. So thank you.
Uh, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, the next item is a resolution. Um, so I will, um, ask for a motion, and then we can ask any questions once we have a motion on the floor. So is there a motion to approve the resolution to authorize Christine Nesset to act as the identified official with authority for the Northfield Public School District six fifty-nine? Moved by Ellen. Is there a second? Second by Tom. Questions, comments? Dr. Helman could...
Yeah, you just mentioned that. Uh, we have normally taken this action as part of our organizational meeting in January. We've done it for several years in a row. There's just been some changes in how the state wants to accept this. So in previous years, we were able to submit the minutes of the meeting uh, as proof that we had identified Christine Nesset as our identified official with authority. You all know Christine is our student information system specialist, and she's outstanding. Uh, there's been some internal changes at the department where they're asking us to take this and provide a resolution for them. So we've actually already taken this action, uh, normally as part of the organizational meeting in January. We just simply need to do it in a little bit of a different way so that we are able to provide that access.
Amy? Will this be just through the end of the year now?
Yeah, so we'll have, we're required to do this every year. So as part of our new, uh, approach in January of every year, we'll have you do a resolution as opposed to just a consent agreement.
Any other questions or comments on this, on our last procedural question? This is a roll call vote. Anita? Ron Hap?
Aye.
Rowan?
Aye.
Arty?
Aye.
Iverson?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Munao?
Aye.
Strathlon?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Our last item for individual action, again, I will, um, ask for a motion and, um, then we will, um, be able to ask questions of both Dr. Helman and Val. So is there a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the approval of the sale of general obligation school building and alternative facilities refunding bonds, series twenty-twenty-A, coveting and obligating the district bound by and to use the provisions of Minnesota State Statute one twenty-six D point five-five to guarantee the payment of the principal and interest on the bonds? Moved by Amy. Is there a second? Second by Ellen. Dr. Helman or Val?
Well, we have Jeff Sealy here with us now from Color, so I'll ask Jeff, uh, unless Val would you like to give it an introduction? If we just turn it right over to Jeff?
I think you can turn it right over.
Very good.
All right. Well, thank you for having me. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight about, um, refunding bonds. And, uh, in your packet, you should have had, received a, what we call a pre-sale report. Uh, so I'm going to highlight some of the sections on that. So tonight, we, you have a resolution in front of you to move ahead with and authorize us to move ahead with the issuance of refunding bonds for a purpose of saving tax dollars. Refunding is similar to what you might call refinancing when you're talking, say, a home loan. So we're looking at ten million, three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in general obligation refunding bonds. Um, the refunding bonds will issue, will be issued to refund two different bonds that you have outstanding. And there's, uh, the twenty-eleven A, which were school building bonds, uh, they were refunded once before, and the, uh, twenty-twelve series of bonds, which were all facility bonds. So the refunding is not only, um, refunding two of your old bonds, but it's for two different purposes. One is to refund school billing bonds, which require a vote. And one is, one part is to, uh, refund the all facility bonds, which did not require a vote. So on the twenty-eleven A bonds, those were your old, uh, uh, school building bonds, you have, um, several maturities or principal payments left, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. So there's only three years left on them. Uh, but the interest rates range from two-point-one-two to two-point-three-seven percent. Uh, now, we're anticipating, and when, and your twenty-twelve bonds have an interest rate of two percent. Uh, so each of the principal payments carries its own interest rate. Um, we're anticipating that in this period of low interest rates, um, that we will get equal or lower interest rates, plus we anticipate that you'll be given a premium upfront, and that premium will contribute to the savings. So looking at it, the, we anticipate that you will save two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars between fiscal years twenty-two and twenty-five. So that's a shorter period of time, but two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars worth of savings is what we're estimating at this point. The new bonds are only for four years, so we won't have any type of call feature, which means you aren't going to be refunding those. Generally, you need about seven years before you put a call feature in to refinance. The reason being is because if, if you have a short call feature, you pay more in interest. So we certainly don't want that. And since it's very short, we want to maximize your savings. You will be enrolling in the state credit enhancement program. That's where the state will step in and fulfill your obligations should there be a default situation. What that does is it gives you a lower risk investment. So, uh, from the investor standpoint, it's lower risk. From your standpoint, you will receive a better interest rate on it. So that program is free through the state, so we enroll you in that. We will do competitive bids on this, so you get the best price on that given day. Um, now, we are going to do a parameter resolution, and we've done one of these before, uh, with, uh, the district. And essentially, that means in your resolution tonight, you're actually, uh, going to authorize two people, one the superintendent, one a board officer, to, um, award the sale uh, if a certain parameter is reached. And that parameter is a savings of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars or more, uh, with a present value savings of one-point-five-eight. Now, we are anticipating more savings than that, but should the market go up a little bit in interest rates, we want to make sure you still can capitalize on it. So we have a little lower target. And why we're doing that is because October twelfth is Columbus Day. Um, the markets are closed. That's when your board meeting is. So we're actually going to take bids October eighth and bring the results to you that afternoon. And assuming they reach that target, which they certainly should unless something dramatic happens in the interest rate markets right now, uh, Matt and a sport officer will sign off on it. Then on October twelfth, we'll present to the full board the sale results, and you will ratify, um, the award of that, uh, bond. So taking a look at, uh, some of the, um, attachments we have in this pre-sale. First of all, let me cover the calendar. So tonight, you'll authorize the sale resolution, which includes that parameter I spoke about. And then on October eighth, we will take the bids. Um, October twelfth, you will ratify the award. November fourth is when we close. That's when the money is transferred to the district. Then on February one is when these two old bonds are paid off with the bond proceeds of this single new bond. Uh, so the, it, it'll be set up, so you will have a single bond that we're issuing, but it's going to pay off two purposes. So when we run the numbers, you can see in the pre-sale report also, we have it set up, a portion for refunding the school building and a portion for the all facilities. And the main page in the pre-sale I'll direct you to is the savings report on page eleven. And that shows that right now, at current interest rates, we're estimating just shy of two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. Again, that's a direct offset to taxes. That is not money that's freed up that can be spent somewhere else. It's a direct reduction for the taxpayers. And then the reason being, on the very last page, page twelve, you can see, these are, this is the last five years of interest rates on a twenty-year bond. So the index shows that, uh, we are just above the lowest point we've seen. And actually, if I go back in our fifty years, this is the lowest point in fifty-five years. We're just above that interest rate. So it's a very good time to refinance. So you have a resolution in front of you. It is a parameters resolution. Questions? I can, I can answer them for you.
What other questions or comments? Amy? I'm just wondering how you chose October eighth as a date. Is it just how much time it takes to prepare the bond for sale? Or how did you come up with that date?
Yeah, so it takes about four weeks to put together a bond sale. And October eighth, we came up with, because we looked ahead to your October meeting, which was the twelfth, and we knew the markets were closed, so we backed it up several days and changed it to a parameter. So we could go ahead and sell it, um, have it signed off on or awarded, and then you guys would ratify it at that particular meeting. And you can see, um, the week of September twenty-one, we are going to put together all the information for the official statement. That is all the information on your school district that investors want. I need to submit a bid. Um, so we'll do, we'll put that together. We'll do a review with administration on it. We'll distribute that official statement. We will do a rating call and secure rating. So that date was, was, is basically one month out from today, a little less. So it gives us time to put all that information together and bring it to you for your next board meeting.
Other questions or comments?
I think the really good news is that, uh, in this time of uncertainty, we are able to finance and we're able to save our taxpayers' money. This money doesn't come back to the district. This is money that will come off the taxpayers' annual tax bill, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars over approximately a per-year period. Not a ton, but it shows again that we're paying attention when we can save the taxpayer's money. We're taking the necessary steps for themselves.
Thank you, Jeff. Thanks so much for your, your partnership with us and for all the work you're doing through. We're doing the right thing. So thank you so much.
You're welcome. It's my pleasure.
Not any other final fact and comment to the resolution? So we will have a roll call vote. Ron Hap?
Aye.
Rowan?
Aye.
Arty?
Aye.
Iverson?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Munao?
Aye.
Strathlon? Okay, that does take care of our items for individual action, so we can move on to item construction, construction update at the moment.
Yes, and you'll see in your packet, construction update number thirty-two. You've got to like seeing those check marks in the, uh, column on the right-hand side with completion. Couple of items that you'll see in the notes at the Greenville Park Elementary School. Again, we have student access available as a nine-one, which I reported earlier than that. Um, punch list items, those are the things that we work with the contractors to make sure that all of the things that we expect to finish. These are often small things. Sometimes they're a little bit larger things. That punch list right now is ninety-six percent complete. And they're not doing that work during the school day. Now that schools are, they're completing that work after hours. At Sibley Elementary and at the Northfield Community Education Center, it's a little bit of an errand. September, it's the Greenville Community Center, of course, the Northfield Community Education Center. Punch list items there are ninety-eight percent complete. And again, they're wrapping up those items this week after hours, after the end of the day. We have moved on to Longfellow, so the final project of our twenty-eighteen bond issue is underway. They have already started to do some of the demolition on the interior. If you've driven by there, you'll see that the parking lot has been torn up, uh, working to redo the parking lot that we had as part of that process. And you'll also see this talks about that we're working on procuring and confirming delivery dates on some of the longer lead items, like the casework changes in the windows. And so that work continues forward. Uh, and then, of course, I want to share with you, I didn't bring the, the Matterhorn tonight, but remember the Matterhorn, it's really a kind of interactive, uh, walk through a building. And they did capture the Community Ed Center on September tenth. And that is something that I will certainly be able to show you at the next, uh, meeting. Uh, but at the same time, it is time, I think, if people would like to set up a group of two or three uh, to do some tours of the facilities again, I'll have Anita work on scheduling those so that people can, they can take a walk through the more completed facilities now. I know most of you had a chance to take a tour, uh, earlier this summer. I think you're just noticed the dramatic changes. Obviously, now we're actually in them. Uh, the buildings are gorgeous. The Sibley addition and the renovation of the Greenville Park, it was fantastic. They're also practical, and they are really lending themselves to our history around, specifically around, um, spaces that are modern and flexible, that part of our community. So we'd be happy to take board members through on a tour. And we, of course, can't wait to show the community, but we just aren't to that point yet where we're able to do any kind of ribbon cutting or things like that. I want to say that so we can really truly do it as a community. And we, we might be able to do that during the pandemic. We haven't ruled that out. It would just, of course, require some additional rules, physical distancing, masking. Um, so we're just still kind of waiting and seeing what the right time for those celebratory moments could be. So that is the construction update for this evening.
Questions or comments for Rob?
Um, I suppose this is a little bit tangentially related, but, um, I was curious about the impact of the roundabout on the traffic flow this morning and also the traffic flow with the new Greenbell, because that's kind of, you know, with all the drop-off and everything, that's been... that's been done before.
Yeah, so a couple of things. Let's start with the new Greenbelt Park. I think it's a hard thing for today to take a look at how that traffic was impacted. As a former elementary principal, I can tell you that the first day of school, everyone takes a little bit of extra time to have the students get out of the car. And there's nothing wrong with that, right? So I was there, observed this morning, the traffic seemed to flow well, and that will just continue to get better, right, as people get the, that are able to get through those processes. The part that will always be a little more difficult when you have a new facility is the pickup after school. I talked to Sam Richardson today, who has some things he'd like to see better and more efficiently. They have a very good process in which they are holding scenes in one part of the building and then radioing to the hotel room when someone's car, parents' car pulled up, very similar to how we do that at Bridgewater. He said that it went overall well, but that there were some things that they really would want to do better. That's always the bigger traffic issue, frankly, is the pickup at an elementary school than the drop off. But again, I would reserve any thoughts about the traffic there for probably a week or 10 days. When we talk about the roundabout, Jim Kossef, our director of buildings and grounds this morning, emailed our team to say they're pouring the curbs. And that's a big deal, right? Because you start pouring the curbs, and I'm looking at all, we know that then the asphalt is going to come fairly quickly after that. We know that the city has the final date of mid-October was the goal. We have some real hope when we see the curbs going in and the asphalt following them, we have some good weather, then hopefully that is able to finish on time or ahead of schedule. The good news about that project is that right now, when you think about, first of all, here at the high school, how that's, how that has impacted the traffic. In the hybrid model, we have about half the kids here. There's about 575 high school students attending campus on any given day. The reduction in the number of cars is a substantial boost in terms of the traffic. So that's been, I think, has been helpful. In addition, you now both in and out of Bridgewater and the high school, it's one way in and one way out, if you think about, right? So if I'm coming into the high school off Division Street, I can only make a right to the high school coming off of Division Street, and I can only make a left right now coming out. So there's, that has been helpful in terms of how that traffic has moved. And it's the same thing at Bridgewater. You can only make a right off of Jefferson Parkway, and you can only make a left coming out of the Bridgewater parking lot. We have limited, for obvious reasons, allowing passenger vehicles, traditional passenger vehicles, to be able to cut through the Bridgewater parking lot up between, you know, by the ball fields there and out to 246 or Division Street. We are letting buses and Northfield lines vehicles use that. So we currently are working with the Northfield Police Department, who are helping us out at 246, and then our own internal staff, both at the high school and at Bridgewater. We are allowing buses and special education, smaller vans, to be able to use that to be able to keep their timings, right? Because obviously, if they had to go all the way out from one and come back, that would increase our times by 15 or so minutes. Today, that went very well, is my understanding from the report. So that is the current traffic implementation, and we hope that when, when the roundabout is done, all of the data that we saw about the roundabout is that that's going to dramatically increase the, I'm not going to say speed, but the ability to get through that intersection both safely and in a timely manner.
It was really great to see the, yeah, crosswalk in the high school, too. Really well done, and the plantings around it.
And that's something that has gotten lost in this, in the whole overall approach, is that if you think about it, we know that right there, where the new crosswalk is, right across, right near Bearman's funeral home and across the church, across the street from the high school. We know that that was a place for years, that we had some issues. And of course, the city really had to do some work there, because you cannot have a crosswalk, you can't have a crosswalk across the street without a sidewalk on the other side. So that sidewalk was extended, basically, all the way right in front of the church, basically, right to the end of that block. And we do now have those pedestrian activated beacons, we know have been successful near the middle school. That's a really big update for pedestrians, right? And so we, because of the lesser number of students coming to school, I think most of them can get into the parking lot. But we know that long term, that's something we're really pleased with, that partnership on the city to finally work and get that part done. That's something we had been aiming for years to do, and I think it's, it's something we normally would have really celebrated, but because of the way things are right now, it's just not as, it's not as valid, who does the other things?
Excellent, thank you. So that is items for information, oh no, I'm sorry, special school board meeting, I'm sorry.
Yes, so we just, yeah, we just want to point out to you that we are going to need to have a special school board meeting in November, and the purpose is to canvas the election results. And so as you all know, normally, we would just do that at a regular school board meeting, but because of the expected volume of absentee voting and the few days extra that the counties are anticipating needing to be done, we wanted to set a special school board meeting now so that it's on people's radars. And basically, what we'd be doing is on November 13 at 1:00 p.m., we would hold a special school board meeting to do the canvassing of the election results. And Anita's been working with the three counties that we serve to make sure that we understand what the timeline is. We have a statutory requirement to be able to complete that canvas in with a certain amount of time. Frankly, we're going up, right up against the end of that statutory timeline, but we want to make sure that we are able to not have to try to call that special school board meeting right around that, that same time in November. So we're just letting you know about it now, so that you're able to plan for it. And I do think that that, we may, depending on if we are still able, we may conduct that meeting electronically, just for the purposes of efficiency, if the state law still allows it, or the state bank still allows it.
Excellent, thank you. Questions or comments about that? Our thanks to Anita for working so closely with all the counties on the election pieces. Again, that's kind of getting lost, so in the detail, but none of it gets lost on Anita, thankfully. So we appreciate you teaming this up for us, so that we can plan for that November 13, or maybe two, and the selection. So future meetings, Monday, September 28, and then we'll be into October. Monday, October 12, and Monday, October 26, all of those at 7:00 p.m. in the High School Media Center. Thanks for a great meeting, everyone. With that, I ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Noel. Is there a second by Jeff? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We adjourn.